Board of Douglas County Commissioners' work session at 4:00 this afternoon. We will be hearing from staff about a new idea, the flexible housing pool. There'll be a presentation for us during our work sessions. We do not take public comment and we do not make any decisions or come to a vote. So if anyone hears something in this presentation and would like to come back to us with comments, feel free to stay for our 5:30 business meeting where we do take public comment, or send us an email, or reach out. And with that, I believe, Sarah, do you want to kick us off while Jill gets organized?
Yes, Commissioners, I can just kick it off while Jill has some handouts that she wants to pass out. Commissioners, this is on a flexible housing subsidy pool that was included in the 2025 budget. I think this is the first of, well, it's a continuation of conversations we've had in the past, but I think this is not the last conversation we're going to have on this program as it moves forward. And Jill, I'll just turn it over to you.
Thanks, Sarah. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Let me pull up my PowerPoint real quick. As Sarah teed up during the budget process this year, the proposal for a flexible housing pool was included in the approved FY2025 budget. And that's a new concept for our organization. It's a new concept for our new, it's actually not a new concept for the community. It's just a label that maybe we haven't embraced, or we don't have as much awareness of. But I think what you'll hear in some of the conversations that we'll have today, particularly with my partner here, Shannon Auri from the Housing Authority, that we have versions of a flexible housing pool already in play, but there's opportunities to expand the model in looking at what other communities have done, that flexible housing pools are a best practice in a lot of ways. I'll have Kim Keaton from the Corporation for Supportive Housing jumping on as well. Because if you all remember just backing up a little bit, how we got to having this conversation with flexible housing pools, the background is related to the work of what is now called the Place for Everyone. But early on in 2021, the Housing and Homelessness Stakeholders Group convened, and before we started developing the strategic plan that is now known as a Place for Everyone, we contracted with the county and the city of Lawrence. We had two contracts for needs assessments to understand what was happening in our homeless response system and our housing, our supportive housing system. We did a needs assessment with the KU Center for Public Partnerships and Research, but we also did a needs assessment that the county led with the Corporation for Supportive Housing that was specific to a needs assessment for supportive housing in our community. Among the highlights in that, in the recommendations for that study were a few that I'm going to highlight today. So one of them is here, and that speaks to that a major challenge in rendering the necessary supportive housing lies in securing the funding necessary to operate and provide services for supportive housing units in Douglas County. This funding is not one-time, but rather needs to be sustainable over a number of years. While much of the capital funding for developing supportive housing is currently available through one-time home art funds, nearly every conversation with stakeholders around Douglas County noted the lack of sustainable funding for both operating and service funding. Currently, rental supports are largely limited to those available through the continuum of care and through the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority. Both sources are essentially maxed out with low rates of turnover. That's still the case today in a lot of ways. What's not, what's different now is those, the investments that were made with the American Rescue Plan Act funds through the county and other partners are now currently in development. And we have other partners that are developing projects to build out the cap, some of the capital that's needed to meet the need that we saw in that needs assessment. What we don't have is, until this, what we're talking about today is more sustainable funding for the, for the services and the rental supports, and that's what we're going to focus on today.
Jill, can I ask a question? Talk about this being, having low rates of turnover. Is this a set number of people or households that's being served at the moment with these funds? And then we, new funds would serve new people? Or is this, I know like we have a lottery system for some of our rental assistance that is kind of first come, first served?
I think it's both. We know that we, the demand for the housing stabilization collaborative funds is, that's why we run a lottery. But I think another number that's important, and I know Shannon can speak to this as well, is in the handout that I gave you from the Housing Authority is looking at the waitlist. The waitlist for Housing Authority vouchers and programs, everything from general housing to transitional housing, and that's on the back page of the handout. You can see in the bottom left, the number of households that are currently on the waitlist, and it's sitting at, I think, in time, from a time perspective, 18 to 24 months. You have a new, Shannon just gave me a new number. She's got a 2024 number, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, we currently have 540 unduplicated people on the waitlist. People can be on any waitlist that they're eligible for. We have, our, our number of applicants have increased by 37% since April. We don't know what is happening, but we are, we are like having to redirect resources to work our applications because we're getting so many applications.
And only a small number of those, well, a majority of these are for general housing, but we, but there's a subset of those that are for the transitional housing vouchers, which are, and some of those specialty programs that we're talking about for this population that would be served through the flexible housing pool, that provide the supportive services, that require the supportive services to go along with them. That's the best way that we can have a sense of how maxed out the larger system is.
You said it's in this handout. We just got this. Can you direct me where it is in the handout?
On the back page. What I gave you is out of date. She's got September numbers, so I'm sorry.
So the 540 that Shannon mentioned was, said unduplicated individuals, and the 392 on the, on this chart says unduplicated households. So are we comparing apples to apples, or is there that much of a shift?
Yeah, it's, it's households.
Okay, thank you.
So for lack of a better, that's again, how we know that we're, we're still maxed out. So the rates of turnover, I don't have the best number of that, but I think that that was something that was determined, that we do have limited rates of turnover when they did the needs assessment, but I think it's still the case, especially for those units that are affordable, that could be made available to the population we're trying to serve. So one of the other recommendations is, was to take advantage of Housing Authority opportunities. And I think you'll hear more about that today, and that's why I have Shannon here at the table. The Housing Authority has, for a long time, had a history of providing specialty vouchers that have required the supportive services with collaborative case management through partnership, partner agencies for a good amount of time. They have a successful track record of that. One of the ones that we wanted to highlight that's very comparable to the way that a flexible housing pool is modeled is the New Horizons program, which is really, it's a specialty, it's a special locally funded voucher that doesn't have all the strings associated with it that any, that a HUD-funded voucher would have. It's local funded, so the parameters and the program elements of it are largely reflective of what's needed in this community. New Horizons was launched several years ago to provide a pathway out of the Lawrence Community Shelter for homeless families. And the city and the county have continued to fund this voucher program, and it has been successful, and you see some of the metrics that are in there. But for, it's the best comparison we have for what does a locally funded supportive housing voucher look like in Douglas County? That's our most relative example. The third recommendation from the Corporation for Supportive Housing was to identify innovative strategies for sustainable operating and service funding. I'm not going to read all this slide, but flexible funding pools are flexible housing pools, they're called different things in different communities, was one of those recommendations. So that's what led us to the discussion today, or to the proposal that we included in the, in the budget. We've talked for a long time in our supportive housing work groups around the idea of a locally funded voucher, because there is, there is, the need on the coordinated entry list is extensive each month, but meeting the requirements for some of those vouchers, that's, that's harder to do at times. And having, having the, they have to be documented as being chronically homeless. Sometimes the population of folks that need, most need to be served do not meet the literal definition of homelessness because they're couch surfing or they're doubled up. So the attractiveness of having a locally funded voucher program is what led us to continue to study the flexible housing pool. There's a bit more here that was just pulled exactly out of the needs assessment that you had a full copy of linked in the agenda packet, but it, you know, some of the, some of the pluses of it are that it, a more fully actualized flexible housing pool, if you look at them in other communities, is they create a platform for cross-sector partnerships and governance. When we think about what does that look like for our community, we already have that in place in terms of the A Place for Everyone Supportive Housing Work Group, which would be positioned to provide a lot of directive for designing this program. Who would it serve? How would it serve them? We'd be consulting with those subject matter experts on how we would operationalize that moving forward. But it also provides a, a platform for potentially, if there are additional funders that want to be a part of supporting this solution, if you look at what other, what flexible housing pools look like in other communities, they are at their base funded by local resources, but you see foundations saying, this is something that I want to be a part of as well, and adding money into that flexible housing pool to have maximum impact in communities. So the, you see that local funds provide that foundation, and it attracts additional funding to provide, to support these needs on a larger level.
And what might some of those funding sources be that could attract, you're talking about your foundation support, grant writing support?
Mm-hmm.
Are there other state or federal dollars that could help feed into that and still give us some local control, or not?
Maybe, maybe. When Kim's with us, she can give us some examples of what this has looked like in other communities. I think you see state funding that can often be layered into it, but more often than not, it's private foundation money. And that can be, you know, one-time, it could fluctuate, but you, in other communities, you see a more stable level of foundation funding that's layered on top of that. So it just depends. The other highlight from that, from that, those recommendations was to focus on specific populations of need. And you all are familiar with our strategic plan. You know that we, we have, we identified our priority populations very early on, and I will not call all those out that are in a place for everyone. I don't have my notes slide in front of me, I apologize. But this is from the, the supportive housing plank of our A Place for Everyone plan. And this, this slide, the priority populations that are in this slide are pulled from the needs assessment with the Corporation for Supportive Housing. And you can see that we've always, in our supportive housing work, led with prioritizing our chronically homeless, single individuals, because we know that that's a population of folks that most persistently show up as needing supportive housing. And so we have our, we have our priority populations here, our chronically, chronically homeless families, our elderly, our justice-involved, child welfare-involved families, transition age youth, and then youth, and then transition, transitional substance use disorder, and severely mentally, severe mental illness. This chart frames up what the, how many units are identified as needed in a place for everyone. And then the next, the next section, you see the units that are currently under development, whether through ARPA funding or the FY2025 budget. And then you see what the gap is here. The units needed are, what's identified there is just what we identified as needed in the next, in the five-year plan for a place for everyone. That doesn't meet the entire need that was identified in the Corporation for Supportive Housing's needs assessment, because that was a huge number. It was about 300, 300 or so, 363 people. A good amount of those folks were in the ADD population. I do think in a, you know, future iterations of developing a supportive housing plan moving forward, we will continue to expand who we can serve and how we serve them. But in the first five-year version of the plan, these are our priority populations. These are the units that we still have, we still need, and the gap that need to be served.
Jill, just to make sure, when you say ADD, intellectual and development disabilities...
Correct, I apologize. Yes. We also know that there's a lot of, we don't know how many of those folks are unduplicated in that number, because we, we, there are a lot of folks that are experiencing intellectual disabilities, traumatic brain injury in our homeless population, unfortunately. So I still think we have a lot of work to do to interrogate those unduplicated numbers, but the last I saw in the point-in-time count, the, for this past point-in-time count, the number of folks that were classified as chronically homeless was about 130 people, and it stayed about 130, 140 for the last four years. So that number's staying pretty constant. So I use that at least as a barometer that this need is not going away.
So we have a list of, of units that are in development, and some of those projects I could probably name just from looking at that, but is it, would it be okay to just briefly run through what some of those projects are and who the partners are that are spearheading that?
Sure. For chronic singles, that 22 is the Burt Nash Community Mental Health Center. Their, the project that they have in development, that the county's provided $2 million of support to, towards. The chronically homeless families, that is largely going to be met by, well be met by the Ninth Street Missionary Baptist Church Family Promise Collaboration that was approved for the FY25 budget. The near elderly 55-plus, that is the ARPA-approved project with, for Clinton Place with the Housing Authority that's currently under development. Our justice-involved population, that five that are there, that is largely a, a product of partnerships with tenants-to-homeowners for the units that were acquired, the, the capital investments for the individual properties that they've identified. Those child welfare-involved families, we assigned, we also assigned those toward families that could be served by the Ninth Street Missionary Baptist Church potentially. In conversation with Family Promise, they thought that would meet, they would meet that need. And then the transition age youth, we're looking at projects that between the tenants-to-homeowners projects and the Habitat for Humanity projects that were approved with ARPA funding could be served through there. And then the transition SUD, looking at the DECA project primarily, but we know that because of the nature of the ARPA, the ARPA investments with tenants-to-homeowners and Habitat, that the intent is for those to be mixed-use developments, to be able to serve the priority populations that have been identified in the plan. True. And I didn't mention Cardinal Housing, excuse me. Cardinal Housing is the other one in addition to, in that transition SUD, but also justice-involved increasingly. There's a lot of overlap with the justice-involved need and the transition SUD that Cardinal Housing is really stepping into that space. So looking specifically at what are the core elements of a flexible housing pool? At their base, you have funding for the rental subsidy. The dollars are paid to the property providers on behalf of the participants, so the property providers being the landlords. This could be administered by a third party contracted to act as a financial intermediary. In our case, thoughts would be that that would be the Housing Authority. But in other communities, that is, that is traditionally how it functions, through a Housing Authority entity. And then you provide the flexible resources and the dedicated staff to secure the units. So helping facilitate, having, having funding to go out and actually identify units that could be made available, to be set aside for a flexible pool, to be available as, as needed, to have those partnerships with landlords, but also having the funding that's available for security deposits, financial incentives, to be able to provide the person-centered thing, the individual things that are needed for each scenario. And in the handout that you were given, you also got, granted, it was from July, but the landlord incentive program report. We funded the landlord incentive program with the Housing Authority for the last few years, and you can see there's examples of the different, of different ways that that, those funds come into play. And that they're also co-mingled with damage, damage relief funds that help just eliminate the barriers that a lot of these folks face when getting into housing. And then the last part of those core elements of the support services, the case management and the tenancy supports. So having separate agreements with the case management providers to ensure that folks stay housed. And again, we look to the examples that the Housing Authority has had with a successful track record with their transitional housing programs. These would be more permanent, but with a goal of moving folks towards a permanent voucher, so we could make sure that this, these funds serve the most amount of people. But you see a success in the way that the supportive housing vouchers have historically worked with the relationship that the Housing Authority has had with case management providers. The opportunity with this program and these funds, though, that we want to really be thinking about, though, is for a long time, case, the availability of case management in the community to keep folks housed has been, it's been an ongoing challenge. And a lot of that is, you know, how do you, how do you, how do you incentivize low caseloads so that, so that the case managers can go out and spend the time that's needed to, for the lot of these folks, spend more time than they may, they may have with limited funding? We can talk about that a little bit more, but that's one of the things that we're really thinking hard about. Other elements of the flexible housing pool that we're trying to think about is that administrative overhead. If we're working with an organization like the Housing Authority, we're going to assume that there's going to be an administrative burden on the housing, on the part of the Housing Authority to be administering an additional 22-ish vouchers, so to speak. We want to think about expenses like holding fees to have units available when they're needed, furniture and other necessities, background checks, housing application and other miscellaneous fees, and then other, other, other funding, funding needs that could, that fall into the category of eviction prevention, providing back rent, utility payments, our previous damages, that might be a barrier to folks getting into housing. I couldn't get my video to work earlier, but if you get a chance to watch the video, this is a great podcast, or a great episode from, about the flexible housing, one of the oldest flexing housing pools that's been around in Chicago. I've got the link in here, so I apologize. I shouldn't have put it in there. Oh, it's going to go through anyway. So when you look at a cost model for, with the $600,000 that we have, this is just a rough, these are just rough estimates of what it, what, how we could divide up the $600,000. It's an estimate, so the squishiest number that's in here is probably the administrative overhead, because I don't yet have a good number from my, my partners at the Housing Authority about just how much it would cost for them to be our administrative partner in this, because we're still just in the discovery phase of this. But this gives you a sense, the rest of these numbers, I would say the rental subsidy and the utilities, those are numbers that are built on current fair market estimates. And these are the numbers that are also used to build the current HUD funding that we have for our permanent supportive housing program. So these numbers look very similar to what we're paying currently for landlords and what their, our budget is to provide the utility support for our permanent supportive housing program that we have HUD funding for. So I modeled those numbers to look a lot like that, and you can see that the rent utility, it absorbs a lot of the funding that's available. But then you, the, some funding that's set aside for those flexible resources, and then the funding that's set aside for the supportive case management, those, the numbers that are, that build that annual cost per household for the supportive services are based on a formula that the Corporation for Supportive Housing had given us, and I don't, I don't have my notes here in front of me, I need to have those in front of me, I'll have them in a minute. But it, it's structured in a way that it's compensating agencies to, to have high-quality case management and low caseloads. So again, these are just estimates of how we could divide that $600,000 that's been set aside. So when we think about what, what are next steps look like moving forward, it's the design and development, we're, we're looking at our supportive housing work group. The folks that are, the representatives that are on that work group, we have the Housing Authority, we have tenants-to-homeowners, the, we have DECA, we have Burt Nash Community Mental Health Center, and Cardinal Housing, essentially anybody that's doing supportive housing in the community is, sits on that, that supportive housing work group. So we'll be taking the design of this program. How do we identify priorities and values and goals for the flexible housing program? And a lot of that is, you know, how are we, what is referral and outreach going to look like to identify folks that could be served? How do we engage landlords? What, how, what does the administrative piece of that look like? For a lot of this, the administrative burden will be on county admin staff in addition to the Housing Authority. It'll be a collaborative partnership in the early days of this, and I think that's largely as we try to understand what are the performance outcomes we're going to be driving towards with this kind of a program. When we first, when I first met with, Gabby and I had a conversation with the Corporation for Supportive Housing to just, you know, get some tips on how we start this out. One of the recommendations was, as you, as you strive to have a performance-based program, you want to start your first year perhaps to get some, get a baseline of, set of performance up and going, but, and then start to articulate what are your performance outcomes that you're going to be initiating, looking at, about, looking at to renew contracts on in year two. So looking at housing stability at 12 months, these are just examples from other flexible housing pools, looking at success of getting income through employment and eligible benefits, getting tenants connected with medical insurance and primary care access, and then connecting them to mainstream affordable housing subsidies. Those are the sort of things that we'd be looking at to evaluate whether or not contracts would be renewed with service providers after year, year two. And that is the end of my presentation. I'm not sure if... Hey, Kim, if you are able to accept us being a panelist, we're just, we're going to jive into questions and answers and, okay. I invite Kim Keaton to join us. She can provide some context if there's questions about how these models are used in other communities. Thanks for joining us, Kim. And then, of course, I have Shannon here, and we're open for questions if you have any.
I have a question. So as, as someone gets set up within this program and then, you know, has that stability that leads to employment and having more of an income or a steady income, how does that, how do you anticipate reckoning on, on how that remains flexible and then they take over a portion of their rental, take back a portion of their rental assistance as they are able to pay for it? Is that something that would transition out, or would you just be into the program for this 12 months and then out of the program, or what?
The way we've talked about it initially with, with Shannon is, you know, if you look at the average wait time it takes to be on, on a waitlist for a mainstream voucher, that 18 to 24 months, that would be, that's also where I think flexibility comes into play. I'm going to look to Kim for this, for this, but like, I think in other communities, sometimes these are, these are intended to be permanent, permanent resources that could stay with the same individual for a decent amount of time. But Kim, can you provide any context about what that looks like as, for folks to transition?
Yeah, I mean, one thing that's interesting about flexible housing funding that makes them different from typical Housing Authority, for example, Housing Authority or HCV vouchers that are tied to, you know... that are tied to, you know, housing authorities, is those have really strong caps, right, for income and what people can make. And flexible housing pools can be a little bit more flexible, as the name might suggest. So if, say, somebody, you know, actually goes and they're, you know, able to pay 50, you know, 50 to 75% of their rent, and that is negotiated, like, that can be, they still wouldn't lose the place, but it would make, they would pay that much, you know, whatever the negotiated amount is, more towards their rent, giving that much more money to the pool to then potentially house a different consumer.
Thanks, Kim.
I think something to figure out is policies around when people are, you know, because these are going to be scattered site, if I'm understanding correctly, right, Jill?
Yep, yep.
Is, you know, if people are able to then, at some point, take over their rent, what's the policy and procedure around that and helping folks remain stably in a particular unit, right? You don't want to have to make the move.
Right, right. So I think, yeah, you know, scaling, it went through strong partnerships with landlords, building on relationship, existing relationships we have with landlords, I think is, makes that key.
And I would say, a good example of kind of what you're talking about is, let's say someone's coming out of DECA or CARWU's program, right? And they're nowhere, they're gonna get on our list, but they're, I mean, we're not gonna get to them for 18 months, two years. Well, this is a possibility of keeping people housed and sort of maintaining their sobriety and their treatment while they wait. But we'll have to be real intentional about how we negotiate that agreement, because you really can't, you know, I mean, and then once they would get up on our list, you could transition to a regular Section 8 off of this program. But I think this is a really beautiful program for people who can't afford to wait, domestic violence survivors, there's a whole, I mean, that's why, you know, when we talk about the special vouchers we've created, that was our impetus to create them was for the people who can't afford to wait and probably need a little bit of help to get from a situation, right, where there was significantly unstably housed and having issues to a place where they're ready to have a job. And, I mean, you could, I mean, you can see people, I used to see them graduate from behavioral health court. You, I mean, you see kind of that trajectory of, they came in and sort of one situation, they're leaving, you know, maybe with a college degree, I think I was here one night, somebody's gotten a college degree, and they've graduated and they have a job. That's a whole different kind of thing. So this is a good, I see it as a really good program for people who can't afford to wait and particularly for scenarios where, as a community, we have invested in DECA and their program and CARWU's program and all of those kind of things. And the answer is not send them back to the environment they came from. That is not the answer, right, to making that work and their progress and their opportunity to continue.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about, you know, the work that, the hard work that's happening right now to try to connect some of the folks that are in unsanctioned campsites with housing. We know that a barrier for a lot of folks is, they don't, they don't want to go to the Lawrence Community Shelter for a lot of really good reasons. It's a congregate site. And we need to have, one of the things we've talked about for a long time with A Place for Everyone is having choices, building out more choices for people. And I think this program offers just, it's another choice for folks to be able to exit homelessness or exit whatever situation that they're in. And to have, well, the permanent supportive housing program that we have the HUD funding for is a meaningful baseline for that, it's only 12, but it is working well, and they are connecting folks from some of those unsanctioned campsites directly out of homelessness. So I do think we're going to stay focused. I think the populations Shannon mentioned are priorities, but I also think that our chronically homeless population is going to continue to be a focus that we'll talk about in the work group as we develop our policies and program elements. Another population that has risen to the top of, it's been a significant concern among providers, is we know that there's a handful of pregnant mothers out in the community right now that are homeless. And so how do we prioritize that population? Which females were identified as experiencing disproportionate rates of homelessness in our community, based on the findings of the Corporation for Supportive Housing. So we don't have a explicit offering just for females in this community through A Place for Everyone. We are striving to prioritize that community, but I think with this flexible housing pool and a locally funded voucher program, that we have the parameters to, you know, determine who will it serve and how will it serve them, we have the opportunity to experiment with positively impacting some of those disparities.
So thanks for all the work on this. I really appreciate the slide that shows sort of how many units we need and how many units are developed, and it shows progress over time. I wanted to unpack this 37% though, a little bit, because that seems like a pretty significant increase. Shannon, is that 37%? Are those individuals or are those households?
That's households.
Okay. And then tell us what happens when those folks are on that waitlist? Like, what's their housing situation without it, without these supports that you're talking about tonight?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the hardest part of this job is where we have to say we don't have any emergency housing, because they may be at Willow, they may be at the shelter, they may be doubled up, they may be living in their car, right? It just really depends. Or they may be so highly rent burdened that they're really about to fall down the slippery slope, right? And, you know, the slippery slope is like, one of those things like, oh, a single mom's barely making it, and then her car breaks down, and that can cause, right, her to have housing issues and not pay her utilities, and then they're shut off, and then she can't get to work, and now she's lost her job. And so, I mean, it is, they're everywhere. And if you kind of look at our demographics, it's elderly, it's disabled, we have a very high percentage of single moms, I mean, a really high percentage of single moms that we assist. And, and so they're just waiting, honestly, I mean, and they're, I mean, they're just trying to survive while they wait.
And if I can follow, there's a narrative out there that, you know, we've made, county government, city government has made a certain amount of resources available, and that the people that make up this 37% are all coming from outside of our community to take advantage. As someone who works with these people who are being waited, can you address that? I mean, is that your experience?
No, and the Housing Authority, we have a Douglas County preference. And so if you're from Douglas County, you have so many points, and so you're up higher on the waitlist. And we'll serve anybody, but you get more points, and it's still Douglas County residents, it's 18 months, 24 months. And, I mean, we have a couple of other programs that move a little faster, some of our transitional programs move a little faster, although, you know, the one we partnered with Burt Nash, it was moving fast, and all of a sudden now it's got 30-something people on it. And we don't get enough funding to get to that many people in three years. You know, I mean, it's kind of one of those things where the demand is just outstripping the supply. You know, I wish I, you know, I think it's the cost of housing, I think it's, you know, it's all the kind of things that, but we, you know, it's not people coming from other places, it's our people.
And then sort of my last question, thank you commissioners, is last week we had a number of people here asking us to hold a revenue-neutral rate when it came to taxes. What I hear you saying is that the demand is ever increasing. Revenue-neutral would mean that we would have no new funds, and every year we would need to reduce the amount of funding that we spend, because I'm going to assume, and maybe I'm misassuming, that the dollars that people are paid to do that administrative work doesn't go down every year, it increases every year. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes.
So by holding a revenue-neutral rate, we would have to make very tough decisions, and we would see this 37% actually increase. Would that be a correct analysis?
Yeah, I mean, I do, particularly with our seniors, I really do worry about people getting knocked out of the homeownership, right? I really am concerned about that. And I think it's correct to say that a lot of times, things get passed on to tenants. And so it's, it's, you know, it's one of those bizarre kind of things, you're almost damned if you do, damned if you don't. Because, I mean, the cost of living is just going up, we're a city between two rivers, right? So there's some limitations we have, and what we really need is more housing. And that's just the bottom line. We need more housing, and it tells me make some sort of, you know, I, for my first 10 years in this job, I refused to say this because it was so unpopular, but we must go up. We must go up. If we are going to have the right number of units to house our people, we have to get more comfortable with multifamily and multi-story housing. And that really is the answer. We must go up.
Any other questions?
I do have some questions, but I'm just appreciating all that context, Shannon, so thank you for giving us some examples and some tangible points. And I think that, you know, the rent burden piece of it is so significant and often, you know, not unpacked enough in a lot of our public conversations, I think, and that it is a choice for property owners and landlords to increase rents for reasons X, Y, Z. Maybe it's because they want to increase their rents beyond a place, beyond the limit of accepting vouchers, for example, and subsidies. Maybe it's a choice to pass along whatever their increased cost of living and cost of doing business and increased taxes or insurance on their housing is. But it is, it is a choice, not a foregone conclusion, for those property owners to pass along that increased inflationary rate to renters, and that, in my opinion, is one of the most obvious impacts on our growing houseless population in this community, and how many more people are facing houselessness and precariously housed day in and day out for many of the reasons you mentioned and more. So I just, I do want to put a point on that, and I think that I'm really excited about this program and eager to see how it develops and what types of modeling from other communities seem to make sense here. And I can tell from the work done so far and the sort of praxis by which you all are looking through this, at this issue, is truly thinking about how to make it as low-barrier and inclusive as possible, to be as close to a catch-all for folks that are falling between gaps in our current systems that are so heavily regulated by federal guidelines, in the example of HUD, and that we know there's a bunch of examples of how that just sometimes gets in the way of practically moving forward in addition to the lack of literal units and enough units. And so it's a lot of different pressure points at once. I think I'm interested in, you know, as the process formulates and we think about the administrative side of it, and presumably we're, you know, landlord engagement is mentioned throughout. Jill, you talked about that a few times, so, you know, presumably, well, tenants to homeowners and Cardinal House and some of those other partners you mentioned might be partners for the supportive housing services, or not necessarily the property owners or who's providing the actual housing, right? So still working with private landlords and property management companies is a big piece of the puzzle, to be able to identify those scattered site units. I'm interested in what kind of thoughts have gone into so far, or I'll just plant the seed about criteria around types of background checks, application fees, and screening criteria that is used. If we, as a Douglas County housing, a flexible housing pool, are going to develop some low-barrier standards around those screening criteria, and the expectation being that we are working with landlords and property managers who are willing to enter into those low-barrier agreements and to not do overzealous applications, I'll call it, that can be really intrusive and exclusionary. So I'm just curious if that's been a piece of the conversation so far about how we might set some standards around that.
I think it's going to build off of the work that we've done the last couple of years, that has in a large part been facilitated by the Corporation for Supportive Housing. We extended a, we've done a couple extra contracts with them beyond the needs assessment. So we did an assessment of trying to understand how does supportive housing case management show up in the community? What are the gaps? How do folks do it? Who's doing it well, who's not doing it maybe as well as they could? And then we brought everybody together, all the supportive housing providers earlier this year, to get organized around a common framework for what, how to effectively deliver consistent supportive housing case management as a cohort with around common standards. And we, when we had that engagement earlier this year, we had one part of that, of that, of the two-day, the two-day session, so four days, was we had a landlord panel. And some of the things that we heard from landlords was, you know, they just want to have good communication, they want to know that, yeah, that there's funding available, and that there's just, there's common expectations around, clear expectations around what that supportive housing provider will do and what will be expected of the supportive property manager, and having the consistent available funding available, consistent funding available is just as important. But I think we're going to continue to look for some technical assistance from our colleagues, our colleagues at the Corporation for Supportive Housing. And so I don't know if there's any tips that you have, Kim, that you want to share with that you've seen other communities, and as they approach a low-barrier model to this work that you could offer?
Yeah, I mean, I think one really important part of setting expectations in something like this is in how, if you are going to release an RFP for providers of the services, and to set up expectations within the language of that RFP, so that providers, you know, we could take that, and I think the journey you've been on, take what we all sort of agreed on in Douglas County via the technical assistance that was already received, and then kind of translate that into the type of quality standards we want to see in supportive housing in the community. I think building from there, I think, right when I jumped on, Jill was talking about, you know, the opportunities that this has for really evaluating the effectiveness of the housing pool and holding providers accountable for affecting, you know, doing the things that we want them to do, to being low-barrier, providing quality supportive services for, you know, people retaining in housing or moving on to other successful outcomes, and, you know, provide an opportunity to then measure those things and potentially even, you know, eventually do some performance-based contracting. So I think, like, for, I would definitely say, paying attention to how we're procuring the providers is probably the next big step.
Thanks, Kim, and thanks, Jill. That makes sense, and I appreciate that. My commentary and question was a little windy, so I, I know there's a lot of focus on the service side of things and being able and being able to sustainably serve and really create a shared model of case management and supportive housing in our community. But I'm also, but landlords and property owners are a big piece of the pie. And so I guess I just want to at least plant the seed that as the conversations and development of this continue, how do we, how do we create some firm guidelines and guardrails around low barrier expectations, you know, things?
For landlords, you mean?
Yes, for landlords that are participating in the program and that are going to be, you know, on the front end in terms of application and the screening criteria that they're using and whatever fees they might be assessing and different types of background checks they might require. I just want us to have, I want us to think through, how can we create some continuity in that space so that it's not such an individualized experience depending on which landlord it is that you're, or which unit it is that you're applying for and the way that you might be screened and treated through that process of selection? Is one I'm interested in us thinking through too.
And if I could add on this landlord incentive program that, that county has helped fund, I mean, that is, it didn't have an official criteria, but really that's how it worked because it really served our transitional housing folks, hard-to-house group of people. And we worked with landlords to sort of make sure we backstop them should they get that outlier, that something, some real serious damage happened to their units. And we've, and we have had really good success. If you can kind of see, like, we really have, out of 39, we had seven damage claims. But a lot of that work was up on the front end. And, you know, as Jill mentioned, full disclosure, this is somebody in this situation, here's their caseworker. We promise we will respond if there's a problem. And if something happens, right, we'll backstop you up to this amount of money if your unit gets damaged. And it really does work. The Housing Authority, I think we work with over 310 different landlords in the community. And they are a critical piece to the, to this puzzle. They're a critical piece. And I think that sort of upfront work has, we have seen in the, in the limited amount that we've done, that it actually does work and that we have a ton of landlords really willing to help work with, you know, some hard-to-house populations.
Yeah, I would, during the facilitated sessions with the team from Corporation for Supportive Housing earlier this year, we had some really open and honest, candid conversations amongst the, you talked about tenants to homeowners being one of our supportive property providers, property managers and owners. Their position versus, historically versus one of the supportive providers, Burt Nash in this situation. And that there were some real candid conversations around, hey, you all haven't really held up your end of the bargain at times. And I think other providers kind of, they weren't necessarily piling on, but said, yeah, you know, sometimes you all haven't held up your end of the bargain. So what I think, what I, what I think that that Burt Nash team took that to heart. And what's happened over the course of the past few months is some really intentional conversations happened beyond me being a part of or even some of the work groups that Gabby has been facilitating through the Housing Stabilization Collaborative between tenants to homeowners and the Burt Nash housing team around getting a renewed MOU developed. That new MOU is about to get approved, but it's built upon some of the models that the Corporation for Supportive Housing provided us as templates. But it also has some of the, some of the, it's built on the training that we all engaged in together. And they did that together. And it built what I think is a solid, trusted framework between the property owner and the supportive provider that I hope with some success, we could do some storytelling with other landlords around. Now, tenants to homeowners is, they're, they're a not-for-profit. They're kind of a special supportive property, property owner. But I do think they have some compelling stories. And there was some reticence on their part to being a partner for the permanent supportive housing program that we were very much looking for a partner on. That program requires that it serves chronically homeless individuals, not the easiest population. So there was a lot of concern around protecting those units, those units that county funding had gone into acquiring and improving. They wanted to protect their, their, their interests. And Burt Nash wants to protect, protect the interests of their client. And we want the both, we want the same for both, both parties. But we're demoing some work that I hope we can do some effective storytelling with some other landlords. But I also know, like, as Shannon said, you know, the landlord incentive program, I think there's a handful of landlords that would testify to how crucial that funding has been.
Yeah, just to add to that, that, thanks for clarifying your question. I do think that, you know, because of the relationship with the Housing Authority, the Housing Authority is also, another idea is they have lists of approved landlords that they're already contracting with through, are working with through Section 8 HCB, other types of vouchers. And so, you know, the types of landlords out there who, for whom, working with higher need folks and, you know, getting guaranteed income from voucher holders are definitely going to be out there. I think what Jill said about telling the story about, you know, working with, you know, slightly higher need tenants is that, you know, is a, is definitely a step to get more landlords onto the books.
Saying landlords really do talk to each other about how these programs work and inform each other about whether to take that risk. So I really value that we have 310 landlords that are, you know, individual landlords that are willing to think outside the box and work with partners and provide a very much needed asset. I very much appreciate also Shannon making the comment, we just need more units. We need more units. We need to build housing in our community. And that is a key part of all this. So being able to provide more vouchers if the units are not available is another bottleneck. Commissioners, do you have other questions? Okay, we've come up on 5 o'clock. Glad to hear about many of the pieces in here and how this housing pool may fit into it, the larger picture. Thank you for being here and answering some questions. Sarah?
I was just gonna say, I think commissioners, as we continue to put the bones on the outline of the program, we'll be back to the commission for further guidance and review before 2025.
And that is the beginning of when this program could roll out is 2025, correct?
Yeah, and I'm not sure that we'll, one, one of 20, we needed to come up with a timeline and more concrete information, but we'll continue to work on that.
All right, thank you, everyone. This was our work session. We will have our regular business meeting at 5:30 where we'll take public comment and we have agenda packets at the back of the room if anyone needs one. For that, we are, we are recessed. Thank you.